I'm just gonna down.
All right, we're gonna call the committee of the whole meeting order. Uh, medical clerk please.
Tony Barnes. Mr. Carter.
Yeah.
Mr. Tolan. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah.
Mr. Sack. Mr. Gray.
Here.
All right, uh, let's start with the first presentation, now discussion. That the record show that Tony Barnes is in the room. All right, uh, medical clerk, you have your presentation. Open lands, three, four.
Yes, I'm just gonna do a brief introduction, uh, Mr. Mayor and trustees. Um, I'm just really delighted and I'm hoping that you will be as excited as I am once you hear this presentation and once you hear how much this presentation is going to cost us. Or shall I say not cost us? And we're looking at more than fifty of whatever they're going to be talking about. But this came about because a lady that's in one of my organizations had insights of doing this really about a year or so ago with us. And, um, that didn't happen, but the year before that, this organization, their students and the members, they did assist with Earth Day. So they've not forgotten us. And, um, they had an application that they completed with another municipality and something filled through with them. And they remembered Village of Sauk Village. And, um, so they picked up the phone, called me. We met in the rain last Friday as we walked through. But they're gonna tell you about all of that rain, um, and this entire program. So without further ado, Mr. Mayor, I would like to bring up our guest speakers. We will have two or three. Two. Angela's gonna say something too about the sorority part of it. So we have Leslie Leon. We have Angela Williams. And look at her, she's representing, I just love that pink and green. Come on up. I can get, can you? Thank you for being here.
All right, all right. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Angela Williams. I am actually the committee chair for what's called the Enhance Our Environment Committee for the Lambda Tau Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Um, we, our goal is to, uh, enhance our environment in the South Suburban Communities of Chicago. And, uh, this is my second year as committee chair. And we've done several, uh, tree planting opportunities with other villages, namely the Village of Posen as well as the Village of Flossmore. Um, I reached out to Open Lands this year in an attempt to collaborate with them. And we talked about villages in the South Suburban Community that were actually of need uh, as it relates to trees. And so the Village of Sauk Village was identified as an at-risk area. And I, uh, reached out to, uh, Marva just to see if there may be some interest. And so, um, we had some, uh, initial discussion. Uh, so our organization actually works not only with the sorority members, but also the youth. Have several mentoring groups from the ages of five all the way up through high school. And so they come out with us and participate in the tree planting and actually learn about the importance of trees in the environment, um, as well as beautifying their communities. So, uh, we love this collaborative opportunity and we thought that it would be beautiful to do it in collaboration with the Village of Sauk Village. So I'm so happy to have Open Lands here with me today to share a little bit how their pro- program works. But essentially, we are targeting doing this during, uh, the week that's actually Earth Day. Uh, but that Saturday, which I believe is April the twenty-sixth, correct? Yep, April the twenty-sixth, the morning of April the twenty-sixth, uh, to have a big, uh, celebration and bring about thirty trees to your community. So I wanna turn it over to my partners.
Hello, everyone. Um, as mentioned, my name is Leslie Leon. I am one of the forestry program coordinators for Open Land, Open Lands. And, um, yeah, I just wanna get into it. So first of all, if, um, you aren't familiar with Open Lands, our work includes, um, protecting land and water, growing the tree canopy such as tree planting, which is what me and Tony do. Sorry, Tony, would you like to introduce?
Oh, yes, uh, my name is Tony Rodriguez and I am the community arborist for Open Lands. And together Leslie and I, we manage the Tree Planters Grant application, which is what brings us here today.
Yep, so like I mentioned, um, Open Lands isn't only just tree planting. They also have a lot of other programs that, um, work on policy for environmental causes. Um, and like I mentioned, protecting land and water and a lot of community building. So, we are here today, uh, representing the Tree Planters Grant. So, under that grant, um, it includes just as forty communities and really just areas that are in need of, um, a more robust tree canopy. Um, and fortunately Sauk Village falls under that, so you guys are applicable for this grant. Um, and right now Tony's going to go into some of the benefits.
So trees have a number of benefits to the communities that they're planted in. Uh, but I think the biggest number that you might be interested in is that municipalities that spend one dollar on trees and trees maintenance see a return of benefits of a hundred dollar, twenty-five. So if you might be, in this case, you're not gonna be spending a lot of money on it because we're gonna be providing the trees for free. Uh, but ongoing maintenance for these trees is gonna see a return in benefits and that is both, uh, social, economic, health. Um, one of the biggest benefits that we're gonna see immediately in, on the site is gonna be, uh, water retention. Um, on that rainy Friday, we saw that there was a lot of water accumulating on the ground, especially in the path over there. Trees are gonna be a really easy, simple, natural way to help mitigate some of that flooding over there.
Yeah, so as Tony, my, um, part of what we provide are trees and completely free. Um, Tony and I and my other supervisor, Tom, we hand-select these trees. So we pick out the best ones, the ones that seem that they have the highest chance of thriving. On the actual day that we plant, we also bring the materials such as shovels, gloves, mulch, wheelbarrows, um, tarps, everything that will be needed to do the actual planting. After the trees are planted, um, we do some maintenance on them. So we mulch for three years, that's about a total of maybe six seasons. Um, and we prune the tree after three years and then finally after six years. Uh, the pruning is necessary to make sure that it's growing healthy, um, and it doesn't have any branches that are competing with one another. We also send out an open invitation to our program of treekeepers. Treekeepers are people that have paid and gone through a pretty extensive program to learn about the benefits of trees, how to plant them, um, and their makeup, things of that nature. So they will more than likely be, um, really happy to help with us as well, in addition to any volunteers that you guys would like to join. And then, so our expectations for these trees that are being planted. So the trees must be watered on a weekly schedule, once a week for about years. Um, just to ensure that the tree has, um, the best probability of being healthy and strong and a good investment as well of the grant. In total, I believe these trees, uh, price and labor would be about five hundred dollars. Yeah, free for you guys, so that's, uh, great news. Um, like we mentioned, this can be promoted as a community event, so it could be open to all ages. Our events are usually open to all ages, anyone is able to plant. It's also an educational opportunity, um, for people to learn more about trees, how to care for them, and also just a great opportunity, um, for the community to come together and celebrate life and, um, have a good day to remember. Um, yeah, ideally Saturday, April twenty-sixth, um, usually from nine to one is our planting.
All right, so, uh, last Friday, uh, Leslie, myself and, uh, clerk, uh, Marva were here on-site looking to see where we could plant trees. Uh, she initially had a vision of wanting to see trees along the parkway around the municipal center, so that is where we started. Um, I think originally, uh, the sorors or AK were hoping for twenty or thirty. Um, but there's about fifty-two spots that we identified within easy walking distance of the, um, of the community center, the village hall. Um, there is space for a lot more, uh, but ideally we would just kind of like give you the fifty trees initially, see how it does. And just because we planted fifty trees with you now, doesn't mean that you can't apply in the future to continue to plant more trees either within a municipal center or even including, um, trees in the parkways of the, of the village. That's also something that we do. Um, usually when we start a new partnership with a municipality, we like to focus on one central show, showcase area, which is usually a park or it's usually, uh, around the village hall. That way the, um, the citizens can see, okay, this is something that we can be involved in. Uh, I already came out here, uh, last year, planted a tree, perfect. Now I want a tree for in front of my home. Um, and it just, uh, we call it kind of the snowball effect of trees within the community. Uh, we have a great experience working with, uh, Blue Island. We have a very robust, uh, tree planting program with them. We have recently started working with your, uh, neighbor, Stager. Uh, we've now planted, I believe, eighty trees, uh, in the Village of Stager, um, within the last year and we're gonna be planting some more this year, hopefully. Um, so looking at the areas that we're gonna be focusing on, so we have the parkways. Uh, with the parkways, we're gonna be selecting some very hardy trees that can tolerate a lot of, uh, salt and damage. So that's gonna be trees like Catalpas, hackberries, um, probably a couple of swamp white oaks for those really soggy areas. Um, and then, uh, along the Veterans Memorial, we're gonna be putting some more ornamental tree species to help highlight that area, beautify it. So we're gonna be, uh, planting some, uh, red buds, which is gonna be small, very showy, pretty trees with, uh, magenta flowers. And as a backdrop, we are considering putting some, uh, bald cypress. Just because immediately behind the Veterans Memorial, we saw that there was a drainage area, so there's a lot of water heading in that area. And there's also some spruces, uh, along that fence line. So the bald cypresses will kind of tie into the spruces, um, making it a little bit more cohesive. Along the walking path, um, this was the area that was very waterlogged and very prone to flooding that we saw. Uh, so we're gonna be putting some tree species that are very water-loving. So that's gonna be species like, uh, swamp white oaks again, uh, river birches and, um, some more bald cypresses. Uh, something that, uh, clerk Marva, uh, proposed and suggested was she wanted to see some trees in the picnic grove area. So our vision for that area is to put five, uh, trees there that at maturity will be very large. So I'm thinking, uh, sycamores. So those can get really big, um, but as they're growing, they're not gonna take up a lot of space and people can still move the picnic tables around there. And then in the future, there's gonna be a nice shaded area for people to congregate and repartee.
Yeah, so if, um, anyone has questions, concerns, comments, uh, we are ready and open to answer anything.
Excuse me, first of all, I wanna say thank you very much for choosing Sauk Village. And, um, yes, trees are very beneficial to any, that just the village hall, anyway. I do have a couple of questions, though. Are these trees picked in regard to insect resistance?
Yes, so, um, any tree that we're gonna be planting is not gonna be prone to a lot of diseases and insects in the area. So all of the trees that we are proposing are gonna be native to this area. Um, so they're gonna have that ingrown resistance to native pests and diseases. Um, none of these trees have any glaring pest issues, um, that you might see, especially with, I think you have some crab apples, uh, up on the parkway. Those are very prone to diseases and pests. And that's kind of what happens with a lot of the ornamental trees. Um, but the oaks, uh, are gonna be very hardy. The, uh, bald cypresses are gonna be very hardy. The other thing that we're taking to, into consideration is, um, if anybody here is a gardener, the USDA, um, growing zones have slowly been creeping up and up. Um, so we are also taking that into account. Uh, bald cypress is typically a species from southern Illinois that it does really well there. And we have had a lot of success slowly introducing it into, uh, northeastern Illinois. Um, there's great examples of really big, beautiful bald cypresses, especially in, uh, southern Cook County, I think, um, Homewood. There's a couple of them on the parkway that are doing really well in the low areas, so it gets a lot of water.
And, uh, the, um, the last thing, though, have you ever thought about Lyndon? Lyndon.
We do. Um, Lyndon is also something that we are considering putting on the parkway just because you have those flower, uh, those flowers along with the Catalpas and there are also very hardy street trees.
Anyone else have any? That's a tree.
It's a tree.
We have a couple of them out there already. Anyone have?
Uh, you, you mentioned the repipia maintenance will be about three years. But you said that these trees at this, at the new stage will have to be watered quite a bit. So do you, are you guys gonna have a waters break somewhere? You had water with your team.
We have to do it.
Oh, oh, we have to do it?
Yes.
Exactly, and there's a system in place that it can be done. Our fire trucks have water on them and they have to expel it ever so often. I can't remember how much or how often they would have to do it. So we will be asking them to bring the fire truck to the watering force that's needed. Because right now, all they do is they take the water off someplace and dump it. So this way it'd be used.
And then also there are tree bags that can be, uh, in, in certain places that you can put in. Fill them up once a week and they automatically will, will water.
So I think, I figured between Public Works as well as Fire Department that we will have that covered. But I do wanna say one thing and I want you guys to be true, totally clear in that. The layout that you see here is not a done deal. They stood out there and ran, 'cause I abandoned them. And they purposely did each little dot so that you can see them and you make a determination if that's what you want, where you want, based on what they just said. So this was not Marva just coming in. In fact, they were letting Marva know, um, what their suggestions were and they have wonderful suggestions and it's like, okay. But we get back in here now. But, um, this is, this is, will be our project. So, we would want you, as you are here ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, you can say, "Ooh, I helped plant that tree right there." And you can even name it for yourselves if you like.
I wanted to add too, um, so again, they mentioned that they have up to fifty? Is that what we said? Um, and our original number was thirty. Um, and that was just based on the estimate of the youth and adult volunteers that we would be bringing to the table. Um, we are already, I'm already sort of fielding out interests to see who we can bring on board. However, if you all do have an opportunity through your communication to invite your, uh, the community to come out, we would certainly welcome that because we will put, typically we do this, we put the children and the adults in pods and they go out and they work together in certain areas. So if we are able to get the community involved, then we can support the number of trees that they are actually offering.
Coming. Um, I work with, uh, Grand Boulevard Preventive Services. I'm a youth leader with them and we're constantly looking for projects like these. So I'd like to know how I can get in contact with you and, uh, and we'll make that happen.
Okay, wonderful. I'll give you my information.
Thank you very much.
Any other question? So at this time, is that, we need to know, basically, I guess it would be step-by-step what you need us to do? Give the pair, uh, anything else that we need to? I'm sure we're gonna have to have Julie out here, you know, to do that, that's gonna be one of the things. But is there anything else that you need us to, um, look into or to help out with? I mean, yes, we have other organizations that are in, in, within the village and we can ask them to give us a hand. But I just wanted to know what is it that you need from us, like right away or in the near future? So we can go have a time pick.
Something that would be helpful, um, but not entirely necessary would be if, uh, you could have public safety out there on the day just to, uh, block off the, uh, the lane that's closest to the area where we're gonna be working. Uh, we will have safety vests available for our volunteers, but if we're working with the municipality, it's always easier just to get public safety out there, um, and directing traffic around us just for the sake of our volunteers.
And as far as Julie, uh, Tony and I will be taking care of that on our end. We'll be calling and making sure the permits are secured.
Um, you have an agenda? Chris, if you put this on the agenda to go and talk to you. For the next, for the next board meeting, would you be? So, but thank you so much and, um, I'm sure you have contacted, you need anything before then, but we will have this on the agenda for next week for the Board to Board. And now again, thank you so much for choosing us. And, uh, I look at it as a great opportunity. Those trees do a lot more than what people plant. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
All right, uh, next item, um, for the engineer, um, Melanie Arnold, review and discussion related to the proposal for special engineering services for the Merrill Avenue Water Main Replacement from two-hundred-and-twenty-first Street to Strasburg Avenue.
Okay, good evening. I'm here tonight to, um, discuss a potential agenda item that I would, um, like to be brought before the next board meeting. And that is, hopefully you have in front of you, um, the proposal for engineering services for the Merrill Avenue Water Main Replacement Project from, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-first Street to Strasburg Avenue. Um, you'll remember that several months ago, um, it was announced at a board meeting that DCEO had, um, provided a million-dollar grant to the village for, um, the installation of this water main, which the project map that I just gave you shows the, um, the proposed alignment. It will be approximately nineteen-hundred feet of new eight-inch ductile iron water main that will be installed from along, uh, Merrill Avenue from two-hundred-and-twenty-first to two-twenty-third and then from two-twenty-third down to Strasburg. Um, this alignment had, or this location had previously been selected by, uh, your previous water operator, um, because it was a location that had experienced, it was old, aged, reached its useful life and had experienced, um, many breaks. And so, as I said, um, we have the DCEO grant has been applied for, it has been received, the agreement has been executed, um, and we are ready to get to work. And so the other item that I gave you was just a sheet that I wanted to include. It was, um, the Uniform Capital Grant Budget Template that was included in the, um, grant proposal. And you'll see, um, the design service, uh, fee and the, um, construction engineering fee are included in the total expenditures lines. Um, and as I mentioned, the entirety of this project, everything from engineer, design engineering, construction engineering, bidding and all, um, construction will be paid for out of this million-dollar grant. Um, additionally, special thing about this grant is that we had, um, submitted paperwork so that the funds will be, um, given to the village ahead of, like, we won't have to pay for it out of the village's funds first and then be reimbursed. Um, we will request the funds saying, you know, that, that they've been spent either in engineering or as construction goes along, they will, we will submit a dispersment request and then they will provide payment to the village and then we will pay the contractor. A little bit different than the CBPG grant. A little bit different than the C B B G grant that we just, um, that we just wrapped up on 219th Place. And so, um, the scope of services is very typical of, uh, what Robinson does for the village. It's just a quick, just a quick overview. Um, it talks about, um, the design portion, the topography, um, the preparation of the design, the, um, plans and specifications, um, working to obtain the I E P A water construction permit that's required before any construction can begin. Um, there is grant management and monthly reporting that occurs, um, with this grant. And so, uh, Robinson will take care of that as well. Will oversee the project bidding, um, and assist with, um, the project award after bids are opened. And then, uh, we would assist with the construction engineering, provide construction observation throughout, um, make sure that all punch list items are addressed, assist with, uh, payout recommendations and then, uh, close out the grant at the end of the project. So the payment terms, as I, as is shown on section three, um, design engineering would be 68,000 and construction engineering 62,000, which matches with what's outlined in the grant budget template. And again, all design and construction fees paid for by this D C E O grant. Um, and so I will be happy to answer any questions that anyone has. And if not, then I would respectfully request that this, um, scope of services be added to, um, next week's board meeting agenda.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The last time I looked at the grant, it said it had only awarded 68,000 out of the million. I went and checked the website. So I'm seeing other figures, is more money coming? Because as of right now, it's only 68,000.
Yes, so we will have to request that money to be spent. Um, we will request it of the D C E O grant manager. Like, once we start, especially with construction, we'll submit an invoice, we'll say this is how much money was spent. Then they will process that request, disperse it to the village. And, um, then we would, the village would prepare the, the check for the contractor or to Robinson for the construction engineering. And actually, Robinson has not received any funds yet. They just went ahead and once the grant was approved, just dispersed that automatically, the construction engineering upfront. So that is how that will work.
So the 68,000 has been awarded and dispersed?
Has been dispersed to the village, yes.
So we have that now?
Yes.
And as we, so once we spend this, 68,000, then we can just keep requesting more until we reach the million dollar?
Exactly, exactly.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so you're asking to have this put on? The, uh, this was actually going to, uh, I guess the first thing would be the bidding process, correct?
Well, the first thing will be the design and we're, we'll get that together as quickly as we can. Um, submit for the I E P A permit and then it will go to bid. And we'd like for it to go to bid, you know, as soon as possible so that we can, uh, the sooner that we bid, the better, um, prices will get. So it will be constructed, um, this season. Funds need to be spent by, um, January 31st of 2026 unless a request, an extension is requested. But I don't see, it's, it's, it should be no problem to have it constructed this season.
And then also, uh, I saw where it says contingency. My, I, I'm just looking at contingency and cost overruns, correct?
Uh, that last line item?
Yeah.
Yes. So they are, um, I'm not, I'm not really sure why they put that line item in there because you're not allowed to, to have a contingency line item, um, at least for this. Maybe this is for all different kinds of grants, but for this D C E O grant, we're not allowed to have contingency. I originally did have line item for contingency and I had to take it out. And so there is some contingency built into that, um, the item number nine, the plumbing, um, for 800, 7,400. Plumbing is what is, what we have to, um, describe all of our water main installation. And so there is contingency built into that number.
Okay, because the reason why I'm asking, as soon as you repair these, it makes your, um, service line more P S I, which is P S I, uh, pressure, you have more pressure in your life. And with that happening, nice, just with more water main breaks because now the P S I is probably 80. And then when you do that and you're gonna come straight out, it's gonna raise the P S I coming from the supply line. So that, that was the contingency. We have to, um, take care of water main breaks. Is there anything in there that we could help pay for that? That's, that's what I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm, and I think, I mean, I can, I can craft special provisions to, to include, you know, any potential water main breaks that may
A result from that.
Result. I think there, there probably will, it'll have to be local to, you know, the project area.
Right.
But I can definitely add that
Okay.
verbiage into the special provisions.
Good. But you're almost gonna, it's almost gonna happen, I'm just gonna say that. I mean, right now it's at a certain P S I and once you get the flow and, and, and you're going to actually replace some of the older, um, supply lines. So that's where you replace another supply line.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, just listening to what Mayor Burgess has just said, that because of the P S I is going to be stronger and, and all of that and that could potentially cause more water main rates. Um, how often, is this a loan that we can apply for, that Robinson can apply for yearly?
So this loan was actually presented, it's, uh, D C E O, I'm not exactly sure how it works, but they have, it's their discretionary spending. And so they, I, I think it maybe has something to do with your elected officials. Um, who is the man who's?
L G Simmons.
Yes. They can put in for, um, requests. And so that is probably how that came. It's a legis, you know, legislator kind of, um, puts in for his various jurisdictions and then they set aside certain allotments for the various municipalities. And that is how the village received this money.
Right, because I remember reading about this D C, uh, this grant and I know it came under the COVID-19, uh, funds. So this has been, this grant has actually been, um, worked on since 2021. And, uh, of course, Senator Simmons had presented it last year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I do know that this was COVID-19 funds.
So I think it was discretionary funds that then were reallocated.
Right.
I believe that, that's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um, did anyone have any objection to put this on the agenda to be holding on for next week? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. All right, the next item we have is coming from our own commander, Chris Mizak. Um, is to deal with the Heritage Technology Solutions and also the South Suburban Emergency Response Team Joint Task Force Agreement. Well, we got both of them. The manager's here, so whenever you guys get ready. Should be on.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Clerk, Trustees. Um, the first thing up is the Heritage, um, I T. Uh, this is being brought up because we lost our, uh, I T service a couple of months ago. And with this company, um, we want to bring them in because they, uh, they service multiple municipalities in Illinois and Indiana. And, um, some of them, uh, around here, a couple of Glenwood, um, both in Cal Park, just to mention a few. Uh, Cal Park's kind of, that's our dispatch center too, so they, they service them. Um, one of the big reasons why Heritage is kind of important is that, uh, they're real familiar with, uh, our software and databases because they are already, um, been using, or they already service other police departments. They have the same, uh, systems we have, like our CAD system, our evidence system, our camera system, um, our live scan. They work with county. Um, they would also provide, once, uh, we get our car computers up and running, they will also, they also provide, uh, services to keep those up and running. Uh, one of the biggest things with this company that, uh, to be mentioned is they have all the certifications through the state that they need for, um, through all the information that we run through our leads to get all our information on people that we deal with. They already have all those certifications. They also have the, uh, the C G I S, uh, training certification. Um, that certification was, um, FBI introduced it, uh, as a new compliance for regulations for all law enforcement agencies, uh, requiring certi-, uh, certification for anyone accessing law enforcement data or, and, or their data in their facilities. So it's a, as a vendor, they would, they have potential to access sensitive data. And they, um, they're required to, uh, go under compliance training all the time. So those certifications are always met. And what we kind of worked out with them is not a full, uh, like, year contract or, so maybe we did it as a block. So we started out with, uh, let's see if we can get 20 hours. And, uh, they actually cut us a, a little bit of a discount. Their standard rate is about $159. They're, they're doing it as a discounted rate is 140. So what they're proposing is a 20-hour block, um, they get paid and then they work through those 20 hours and then when they need, if we need, we're always gonna need more hours because things break all the time. So, um, as things come up, we can request another 20 hours.
That's it?
This is.
All right. Do you have any questions? Trustee Barrett?
Yes, um, so we just had, we've just paid over, well over $200,000 for an I T company, uh, the likes of A I C. And we were told consistently that they were working in the police department, fire departments, village. We were also told by the mayor as well as A I C that everything was good, everything was up and running, everything was in place, all the wiring had been run. Uh, the mayor has a, an I T company, I guess, in here now. We don't know who they are, but they're here. And I, A I C just stopped working a few months ago. So what is it? And in addition, you guys, the police department, also confirmed with us that A I C had two guys up and running and everything was fine. So what are the problems? Uh, in addition, the mayor told us that we didn't need another, um, uh, I T because I suggested, and the trustees suggested, that we could bring proven I T in on a temporary basis until we did an R F P. Uh, the mayor told us at that time we didn't need it because A I C had taken care of everything and left everything in a good space. What is the problem now that we've just paid over $200,000 in I T services?
I know, uh, A I C was doing work in our building. They were upgrading all the, um, internet and phone lines which were antiquated, uh, from what I was being told. The things that we're having problems with now is, once all that is, all that was done, we needed them to continue to start securing our network because our network, um, our internal network has been so antiquated for years. So, but that couldn't get started until all of the, now, I'm not a I T person. So all the communications between, uh, with the firewalls, the, uh, fiber cable, all that, that couldn't get upgraded until that got done.
So with the over $250,000 that we've spent, you're saying that they didn't do any of that? And we were told that they did?
No, they did that. They didn't do, they, they were starting to do the internal, like, networking for our computers to start talking and doing the upgrades. There's actual upgrades that need to be done through the state, which they didn't get to because that actually had to be done in January. So there's other things that they didn't get to. So I don't know exactly what was all spent, but I know that they were working with, like, the fiber, um, fiber optics to give us more speed because we were having problems with connectivity in the building. Uh, we were having, uh, restarting our computers because the internet went, went down. So they couldn't do the upgrades to the, um, internal service until those things got fixed.
So you're saying those things are fixed?
Those things are fixed, correct.
Okay, and so why is it that you guys need your own specific I T? I mean, if we, as a village, hire an I T firm, we expect for that I T company to be sufficient enough to maintain our entire, house, our entire I T apartment?
We've been trying because, um, several times, when you have one I T company doing the entire village, um, if we need something, they're over here, they're over at a fire and we can't, if we go down, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed right away. And we can't wait because you're working on something over here, the fire department, Public Works. So we wanted our own I T company so that we can get stuff done quickly, we didn't have to wait.
Okay, you guys just had your own I T company, the police department. Um, from my research, you had your own individual I T company in, uh, 20, in 22? So what was, what was the result of that? Because you had your own I T company just as recent as 22.
Which company was that?
Uh, it was a, it was a, it was a guy, um, I know, I think they were right around, Sergio or Krasnick, right around with them. Do you all recall the other?
I, I, I remember, I don't remember the names. I remember Sergio, I don't know why, um, exactly why they were gone.
Okay.
It was in a whole company.
Right.
Yeah, they, that was a company that was, that was going to, uh, put in, because we never had a server. The server wasn't hooked up. So we actually had a company come in to try to put the server in. And then, w- once we paid for that, um, he was no longer needed because he wasn't, uh, he's, he didn't, uh, he, he did the service, he got us what we needed, but we felt that it was better to go somewhere else to get the server placed in because I think that he took on more than he could chew.
Okay. So, uh, is Heritage the only, uh, when, when we need to do an R F P, is Heritage the only company, um, that you guys, that, that you guys are bringing? No bids or anything else regarding other I T companies?
No, this was brought in as an emergency.
As an emergency?
Yes, because we, there's things that need to be fixed like right now.
So would you guys be willing to allow, um, allow even the trustees, uh, the internal order, to give us a tour, to show us your, your systems, your computers? And just give us an understanding of what it is you're saying needs to be fixed? Because again, we have had at least four I T companies that I can name within the past year and a half, between A I C, Krasnick, uh, uh, the guy that was with you guys, the other contractor, that's three, all within about a two-year period. And what we're being told is that this is wrong and that is wrong. And then we're told that it's working and they were saying it's not working, it's fixed and then it's not fixed. We We need to really walk around with a person that can explain to us as trustees what it is that you, every department really needs. Because for some reason, we can't, we're paying out hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. But you guys keep coming back, asking for more IT people. We need to get IT people in here who can get the job done.
That's why I'm bringing in Heritage, or that's why I'm proposing Heritage. They are, they are an established company with multiple municipalities in this state and Indiana. They are an established company that works with police departments.
So with, with the Heritage IT person, we would like for them to come in and we would like to speak with them. And we would like for them to tour us around the police department so that we can see exactly and have them tell us. Because most times, when any of us that are not experts in those fields try to explain what their job is, it becomes difficult to even understand what it is they really need. Because as you said, you're not the expert in this area. So we would like for them to come in and do a walkthrough and explain what it is that they want, and we would like to take notes. And we would like to have, that we didn't get before. That's why we're two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of money and we still have what we need done. So we would like to come in and see how they're going to do, what they're going to do in phases and stages and approximately how much these things are going to cost us. Because we're, we're always told one thing, but it winds up being so much more. And they're never doing the work that they tell us that they're doing. And therefore, here we are, right back here, all over again, after spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that is, I recommend that someone come in and really explain to us what it is that you need. Give us a face and give us a true estimate of what this stuff is going to cost. And timelines of when the jobs are going to be done, when they're going to start, and these phases. Because again, we've had three IT companies within a year and a half and nobody seemed to have anything done that they needed done. So I would like for Heritage and a representative from Heritage to come before the board.
Okay, you said we. No, you said, you said we.
I would like to, okay, let me rephrase. I, as a trustee, would like to have a representative from Heritage to come before the board and tell us what it is that you guys need that we thought was already done according to AIC and the mayor, and you're saying that it's not. So we need Heritage to come in.
That's not what I said. I said there was certain things done, but they didn't get to start the next phase.
I know, and they came, that's what I'm saying. AIC confirmed that it was all done. That's what they confirmed. And now you're coming here to say there are things that they didn't do. So we just need the professional IT people to come in and tell us exactly what needs to be done and what they're going to be doing. That's it.
Trustee Lee?
Part of the problem, I believe trustee Burns is alluding to, is when the board approves these contracts, we never get a follow-up from the departments as to what was done, what still needs to be done. And when there's an issue, we just find out that contracts are expired or they're not doing this anymore and we have to bring somebody else in. And we just keep approving it time after time. I understand what you're saying is that AIC got to point A, now you gotta get to point B, correct? Do you, all I see here is hours. Okay, is there any more additional costs? Like, equipment or anything else other than hours? It's always seen here.
Yes, so basically what I, what I worked out with Heritage is that as our hours, they will break down what they did for each hour that is in that twenty-hour block. And then if, when we're coming closer to the end, that we would re-up, like, say, because I know things take time, they have to go to a meeting and then they have to go to accounts payable. So when we get down to a certain threshold, like, eight hours, they will send, send us something saying, okay, we're gonna re-up for twenty hours. Because things always break, everything goes down. To answer your question about the equipment, yes, they, we needed four computers. Because there's two computers in the squad room that are completely outdated. They will not upgrade to the new Windows. Computers are completely outdated. They've been outdated for years that, I don't know the exact cost of that, but that was, we were gonna purchase that through seizure funds.
That was my question. So Heritage will not be responsible for equipment?
No, we, we got that through them.
But you're gonna purchase it out of seizure funds?
Correct.
Okay, not out of, they're billing us?
No.
That's what I needed to know, because this is just hourly rate, this is not material. And the other question I have was, my understanding is Heritage is already working in the police department?
They came out, they, they did one thing for us because there was a problem with our camera system. Somehow, everything got wiped from it. And that was a necessity for watching prisoners. So we needed them to come out and fix that.
Okay, because the other thing that, and we're just trying to clear the air. When things like this come to us, like, we need to run away and it gets, contracts get signed and work starts before the board, before the board sees it, it gives us concern. So in the future, I know this is an emergency, but in the future, it helps if we see it beforehand rather than after the fact. But that does sound like quite an emergency and that was taken care of. That's all they did, was just that one thing?
That, that, they were just, yes, that one thing.
Okay, so you're looking for approval to move forward with that?
Yes.
The other thing is budget. We haven't had a budget in, like, three years. So what, how do you feel you are within your budget? Is this fixed into your budget? I know since we haven't done a budget in three years, are you working off the twenty-two budget? Or are you, so are you guys are working very closely? Chief always did, worked very closely with the twenty, the budget, so we're working off the twenty-two. Is this accounted for in that budget until we get enough? Do you think our costs, your costs are in line?
Well, seeing as we haven't had a budget in so long.
Right.
No, I'm sorry. As seen as we haven't had a budget in so long.
Right.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a balancing act at this point. We're trying to not overshoot or spend too much money. But as things come up, we try to address those issues as safely as possible. Because, yeah, we're just trying to stay operational.
And you need to, and you know, budgets can be amended.
Right.
If you see yourself going over what you needed in twenty-two, obviously, things have changed.
Absolutely.
But the thing about budgets, since we don't have a current budget, you're working off twenty-two. Amendments are always possible. You have to have your needs met for the police department. And also, oh, that's it, budget, they're already working in the contract approval. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Burns. Thank you.
Okay, and I do have more questions. So you, so Heritage is already working in the village. There's a, you have a contract with them right now?
As far as I, as far as I know, there was something signed on the twelfth as an agreement.
Really?
Yep.
So you, so there has been a contractor that is coming to the village?
One time, yes.
That has an agreement signed and has not come before the board?
We're coming into the tail end of this, so yes, yes. As far, as my knowledge is that this agreement was signed and that's why they came out and did that emergency for the cameras.
So, and, and no one, no one let the board know that there was some type of emergency or any of that?
Yeah, yes.
But it wasn't, again, didn't come before the board?
It was an email sent to the trustees.
But, but there was no consensus and they still didn't come before the board, so. I know Clerk Campbell was saying something about this situation.
Since this was requested, it was not responded to favorably. Then I personally brought the contract to the board. It was in your meeting packet. I complimented and thanked Chief White for sharing it with us on the front end because usually I don't get the contracts and everything. I don't know if you remember that. But we talked about two different services that had not come before the board. So you did know about it.
But we didn't vote on it. So I know about all of this tonight, that's fine. And I know, we're learning about all this in committee. But we still have to take it to the board and vote.
And that's why they're doing it now, because see, if you think about it.
Well, they're already working here and they already have an agreement.
But.
So that, I mean, that's, that's.
We're doing it right. Please don't shut me. Okay, we're doing good. So if you can remember also, I sent an email to your trustees a couple of weeks ago when it was time to sign the check. I shared with you all that I was uncomfortable with signing a check that the mayor had not signed, only the police chief had signed. And that I thought that it needed to be done correctly. So I know that it's been brought to the board, maybe not directly from who was supposed to bring it to you. But it has been addressed at least two different times.
Okay, and thank you for that clerk, and I appreciate you saying that it's been addressed. My concern as a trustee is there's just way too many contracts and way too many people starting and working in this village that, that requires board approval and it is not coming before the board. Even when there's an emergency, it can be done, it still has to come before the board. Commander Evans and trustee Williams just discussed the budget. I would like to see your budgets, because the budget that I, that the finance department, the mayor, has presented for twenty-twenty-five, none of this is in that budget. And this is your new budget.
I've presented a budget yet.
The budget that the mayor has been, has been, has been presented in these budget meetings, the one that I have.
We have had a budget.
That the, the budget review meetings that we've had, we have the most recent budget that the mayor and his department has structured. As a result, I've gone through all of the line items and the police department still did not include this in the budget. And I wanna, I wanna understand why you all are not including these things in the most recent budget that has been proposed to the trustees. There's been two budget reviews.
Where?
And there's been two occasions where we have been given the most recent budget that he's proposing. At fire department and also for the police department, no one has put these things in the budget. And now I'm trying to understand why.
Because there has not been a budget here.
There is a most recent budget proposal. Trustee Raven, just trustee Raven just handed it to Commander Mize.
That was, that meeting, nobody came?
Yes, they did. Trustee Williams came to the meeting, trustee Johnson came to the meeting, trustee Carter came to the meeting. These are several people that has come to the meeting and these, and these trustees has gotten copies. I have a copy myself.
Ma'am?
And trustee Williams can vouch that she came and she did not. What, no, we're not. We're gonna move forward. We're gonna move forward when I'm finished.
I'm gonna answer the question.
Yes.
Goodness gracious.
Computer Contract Services. We proposed the, the proposed budget was forty-seven thousand.
Forty-seven thousand?
Yes.
And that, and that was for, and that was for Heritage?
No.
It's just for Computer Contract Services.
Okay, for forty-seven thousand?
Yeah, that's what is proposed.
So the proposal that you have, that's been signed off on, what is that dollar amount for? Because again.
Two thousand nine hundred dollars.
So again, before the trustees approve any, any of these contractors or these companies, it needs to come before the board. It needs to come before the board. And technically, we're not working off of a budget. We're working off of twenty, twenty-two. And I would like to know, and I would like to have a budget from the fire department, the police department, all the departments, of where, where your spending is for twenty-three? You all should be keeping a, a, a track of what you're spending in your department. We should have, we should be able to ask the police department right now, give us a layout of what your expenses were for twenty-three? What your expenses were for twenty-four? Can we, if I ask for that, would I get it? Can we get it?
Okay, let me, let me, let me try to get back on track of what we're talking about. Today, they brought a proposal to the board. Now, we can bring this back at the committee, I'm sorry, at the board meeting next week. You can vote it up or down. They just came to bring to you the proposal that they have for a IT for just the police department. But you're going back when we did twenty-two, twenty-one or whatever? There has not been a budget hearing in the last year.
That is not true.
So the only thing we can do, you speak as one person.
I, I'm, I'm speaking as one person, but again.
Excuse me.
You, you, you interrupted me. You asked Mayor Burgess, you're asking this to come before the board to be voted on. We haven't even seen the agreement that they already have.
Then you can vote no.
Uh, uh, uh.
You have it out?
No, no.
Yes, you do.
We, Commander, would you be willing to give the trustees a copy of the agreement? We have no, we, you're asking us to vote. I, where?
Oh, you didn't see that one?
I don't have that.
You didn't have that?
I don't have that.
Yes, you do.
No, I, this is all stuck in my box.
It's on here. It's right in front of the, right behind the resolution. It's, it's on the resolution. It's in with the resolution as a matter of fact. The resolution for approval of agreement with Heritage Technologies Resolution. That's in there.
And when did we get this? Right, we just got this Friday and it's already signed off on.
No, it's not.
Wrong thing? So, so we have a new agreement that has not been signed? A new agreement that has not been signed is in here? I'm just looking at. I don't see anything new. And this was signed in December? Right, so is this just a receipt for that one-time job? Right, and that's what I'm asking. This right here shows that this is a one-time fee. I'm asking for the contract agreement of, for all the scope of work that they're going to do. That's the agreement I'm looking for. This seems to be a receipt for a one-time emergency job. And it shows, it shows the dollar amount in here? It says block time. And that's for the emergency work, correct? So this is not a cost, an ongoing cost, it's a one-time fee for that emergency situation?
That's what I asked you to purchase the twenty hours.
Okay. So in, in, in doing blocks, once we, once we approve a contract, if, if we're gonna get. once we, once we approve a contract, if, if we're gonna get, uh, we're getting, trying to get an IT company for the fire, I mean, for the Police Department, and we don't even have an IT for the village. Is it something that they can do and just be the IT person for the entire village? If we're paying an IT company that has this much experience, why can't we use this IT company for our village in general?
That's where we get two federal lawyers right now because we can't. We used to have one lawyer, one federal lawyer, now they got two.
Again, I'm not talking about lawyers.
Oh.
I'm saying if this is an IT company that has the experience that Commander Mizak is saying, why do we need a separate IT? Why can't Heritage just be our IT for the village, period? I don't think we need two IT companies. We're not that large. We only have, what, twenty computers? Twenty-five computers in the entire village, including Police Department?
No, we have more.
We're not that large of a company. We don't have that many employees. There's only, what, about four in the back, maybe three? So why do we need two IT companies to run such a small co, a small space? Let's just get one IT company that's sufficient for this space.
Okay, like I said, we're gonna bring this to a vote at the agenda, I'm sorry, for the agenda for next week for the board meeting. You can vote it up and down if you, if you so desire. But to be labor on this for the last fifteen minutes, back and forth, it's still not gonna answer all the questions. If you got some questions between now and then that you'd like to talk to the Police Department, go over there and let them show you what it is you wanna see. That's not a problem. Sure does. They'll have some time for you to go there and look and see exactly what it is and why they have to have that.
Okay.
But to go back and forth at this meeting, all you're doing is only, it's not gonna change anything.
Uh.
So right now, it, it could be on the agenda for next week at the board meeting. You can vote it up and down.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. But again, I will say, I will say over and over, this is our committee meeting. This is where we get our questions answered. This is where we have opportunities to ask questions. We cannot do that any other time.
Yes, you can.
If I'm not understanding what's going on, I'm going to take time to ask questions and I'm not going to be rushed because you're coming before the Board of Trustees to ask for money, to ask for contracts to be approved. And we don't have a budget. And I would like to know from you, Mayor Burgess, what are you doing about getting this village an IT company in here? Again, if you haven't done an RFP, we've, we've already approved proven IT to come in. So technically, yes, we have.
What meeting?
Technically, the trustees has already voted and approved proven IT to be the IT, uh, person for emergencies. So the truth of it is, no other IT company should have come in here on an emergency basis except proven IT. Heritage should never have come into this village because proven IT is already been voted on. So why are we consistently go overriding what the trustees has already voted on and has already approved and bringing in other companies behind our backs and under the table? There is a, a, an IT person company that has been approved. Why won't we use the one that has been approved? Why can't anyone address that? And if we're going to deal with Heritage, we need to deal with the pro, of the fact that our village need an IT company, period, all around, all around the board. So I, I don't wanna just deal with the Police Department when every, when, when we have all these, when we have the administrative and fire. We need an IT person. So why are we just talking about one entity of, of the village?
Okay, we've heard from you three times, so we'll move on.
And you gonna hear from me as long as I need to be heard from until I get the answer. Because again, because again, because again, you're coming before the trustees. You're coming before the trustees.
I will answer a recess.
Uh.
If you continue to talk, get somebody else to talk. Let another trustee talk.
Another trustee. Stop interrupting and I can be done.
Mr. Williams, you have your hand up, would you please?
You're rude.
Whatever. Thank you. Would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This conversation has brought up more questions, uh, more comments. Um, number one, number one, Mr. Mayor, um, AIC was terminated in August. Their last date with the village was supposed to be September fifteenth. Uh, since then, I understand they were brought in to do additional work, not board approval. Um, there's bills that are outstanding for AIC at this time. We still don't have a detail of what they did for the money. I appreciate you saying that there's gonna be detail of what every hour that they're gonna do. We need that. We need that. So we approve their payments. We know what we're paying for. But, um, at that time, back in September, we knew we had to go out for an RFP for the, uh, IT. It still has not been done. And now I understand, uh, Mr. Mayor, that you brought in another IT company without board approval that is working in the village at this time. This is what's frustrating to the trustees. People are coming in, doing work. We don't approve them. Then their contracts come in for the accounts payable and they expect to get paid. And we don't know how much money we have because we haven't had a budget to actually report in three years. So please understand our frustration. But as far as the Police Department is concerned, since I've been on board in many capacities over the last several years, I know your equipment is outdated. I know every piece of equipment in Salt Village is outdated. It's been discussed over and over again through the years. So I see what you need. And all we're saying is, it's an internal problem that all these IT companies are coming to say, I'm gonna give you this, I'm gonna give you that before you know it. We still don't have everything we need. So if we need to just do it, now we have an IT company. We don't, if they walked in the door right now, the trustees would be like, nope, because they didn't come before the board. So I appreciate you bringing Heritage to the board, but as far as making them our only IT company, number one, we need an RFP to get an IT company. Number two, is Heritage Police Department specific? Because I see they work with all these different, um, uh, departments that you deal with and reports that you deal with. Are they Police Department specific? So they wouldn't even handle the rest of our IT. Is that, am I right?
They do do other things, but they, they, the, the people that they have coming in basically deal with municipalities.
And what I don't see is the termination clause. So it, to me, it looks like every, you just pay twenty-nine hundred dollars, twenty-nine hundred dollars, and when you don't use them, you pay them, right? So at this time, to get you where you need to be, it would be simply start with them at twenty-nine hundred dollars for every, so many twenty hours, correct? And if you don't use them, you don't pay them. There's no contract here as far as termination clause that I see, right?
Correct. So we pay as a block.
Right.
So we pay for twenty hours. They work those twenty hours. And then we, depending on what happens, or they only use ten hours, we still have ten hours on the books.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
So there's no, it's not like we got, we're, we're locked into a year, two years, three years?
No, it's, it, you were locked, you were locked in for that twenty hours.
Exactly. So we could cha, we could change it anytime. When we get the RFP, finally, we have other IT companies coming in. If they, if you feel comfortable with them doing the PD as well as the rest of the village, I can understand where these are PD specific. These are things that you really need. But at some point, we will be getting an RFP. This discussion will be brought back to the table. Can we get one IT company that can handle the whole village? The problem with the one we had four or five IT companies previous is it was one person. Like you said, if he was here, he couldn't be there. And at that time, all of our equipment was outdated. And he was just, he wasn't given the funds to get the computers and the equipment that we needed. So that was a problem from way back. So we're trying to correct the problem now. So I, I got a better understanding about it, but Mr. Mayor, I would like to get the information on the new IT company that I understand that we have. They're the ones that need to come to the table because we know nothing about them. And they're gonna be presenting a bill pretty soon that won't get paid because the trustees have not seen, uh, heard them, seen a contract, seen an agreement, and I understand they're working in the village. That's not right. And we need an RFP on an IT company as soon as possible. But personally, I don't have a problem with this company taking care of your needs right now because it's, it's a day-by-day basis. There's no contract. And the RFP will take care of, it's gonna take care of everything. That's my opinion.
Trustee, do you have anything to say, trustee? Do you have anything to say? Trustee Carter? Trustee Carter, do you have anything to say? Okay. Um, Commander, do you have another, uh, another presentation? Go ahead, sir.
All right, the, uh, next thing up is the Joint Task Force Agreement with the Suburban Emergency Response Team. Um, this would be a, basically this agreement is, it's a standard agreement that, uh, Joint Task Force have. They have it for, uh, major crimes or accident reconstruction. So this is just another agreement that they updated, um, about a year ago. Um, all the towns have pretty much have to sign it. Um, it is basically, uh, an agreement, what is expected of them and what is expected of the town. Um, you can go through it. Uh, I don't know if you wanna talk in anything, anything specific on it. Uh, it's all there. Um, the only thing that I would say is if this agreement, uh, is not agreed upon by March first, the Salsa Suburban Emergency Response Team will, they will suspend us and will not respond to anything until this is signed.
Is this much like, uh?
Commanders.
Mavis.
Mavis.
Is this much like Mavis?
Yes, um, I don't know. I'll speak. Salsa Suburban Emergency Response Team is basically the Salsa, uh, South Suburbs SWAT team. So they respond to critical incidents, uh, high-risk service warrants. They bring assets in from all these, uh, all their departments. There's several, uh, pretty much everybody in the sixth district is part of, uh, CERT. And it just brings in equipment and things to, um, handle critical incidents within your town.
You have any questions on that? All right, I'll ask. Okay, Trustee.
Thank you. Um, like you said, this was brought up about a year ago and there's been changes. We made, uh, changes to this about a year ago. Is that what you said? I thought you said.
No, th, this was brought up to the towns a year ago.
Uh-huh.
And it was submitted. So.
Oh, because I remember some type of agreement that we had to renew. And I just wanted to know if there was any changes, but this is not that.
No, this is the same one that was written over, uh, a year and a half ago. I don't know how, it, it might have fell through the cracks, but, uh, Salt Village is one of the towns that has not signed it yet.
Okay, all right. Because in the back of my mind, I remember seeing this, but maybe it never got approved or went forward. Okay, so this is the same. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'll ask. I'll just put on the, uh, agenda, um, for next week. Thank you, Gazzler.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say one thing? I know this is your first time before the board, and let me tell you, you did a fantastic job for us. I applaud you.
All right, um, next item, public comments, our questions and comments. Will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the business of Salt Village. Uh, each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes. May not engage in debate, commentary, or rebuttal. I'll answer all questions once our other comments have concluded. When you come up, please state your name.
Linda Washington, just wanna give a note. When Gerald Pike was here, and I have him right here on the phone, he did all of the IT, just to let you know that you are on point, uh, trustee. It's a lot to pay all these different IT teams to come in. Gerald Pike, and I have him right here. He serviced the entire village by himself and he was qualified. When you have somebody qualified doing the job, you don't need a lot of different entities being paid by a lot of different companies. One person can handle it. So I just wanted to let you know that that is a fact.
Kathy Batcher. Um, a couple of meetings ago, I asked a question about, um, the felons still sitting on the board and wanted to know what you intend to do about it. You never did answer me. You treated it as a comment. I'm still asking, do you intend to do anything about felons on, on the board? Um, next thing. Have the trustees or have they not received the budget information they need to prepare a budget? Tonight, I'm hearing they did. From what I understand, they didn't. I would like to know if they received the information and when we can expect a budget and when their next budget meeting will be held. Um, have we filled the code enforcement position yet? Um, last question. Couple of weeks ago, at the last meeting that we attended, there were two, um, residents that submitted lists of questions. Were those lists answered? Thank you.
Bernice Brewer. I have a five question, so mine's won't be that long. I'd like to know about the Illinois Office of, of Controllers Letter that they sent, uh, regarding the audits and the budget. I don't know, have you responded to that or, you know, when you, when are you gonna do that? And, uh, what is the plan to address it if you haven't responded to it? Uh, the second question is that, uh, there's, uh, in your campaign office, you mentioned the forty thousand dollar residual funds that, uh, I guess you guys have accumulated. I'd like to know where those funds come from and, uh, do the trustees know anything about it? Uh, the third question I wanted to ask about is that about the water billing. Now, uh, I know you guys have been having problems for, way over a year, over a year. So I'd like to know how you're gonna adjust all these newest problems about the water billing because my tenants, they're complaining about water billing and, uh, they seem to haven't been able to, uh, rectify the problem. So I'd like to know what's going on with that. And, uh, number four is that in twenty nineteen, well, there was a complaint filed in twenty nineteen, I have a court order number if anybody wanna see it, was signed up by, uh, Mayor Burgess then to get access to, uh, documents. Now, I'd like to know why are we ignoring the court order? And what are you gonna do about this? This is gonna take us back to court and cost us more money. So I'd like to know what's going on with that. Uh, the last question I'm gonna ask is about the one million dollar they talk about for the, uh, water main, uh, replacement grant. Now, I understand that, uh, we had a, um, American Rescue Grant for a million dollars back in February twenty twenty-four. Now, is this a different grant from what you're saying? Is the water main replacement grant, is that different?
One minute.
Is it the same thing? Uh, and when did we get this water replacement grant? This is also on your campaign window. When did we get that money? And, uh, I know that it's nineteen feet of, uh, water main that we're gonna address. So I'd like to know, is that a part of the American Rescue Plan that was, uh, awarded, that's a million dollars then, back in February twenty twenty-four? Is this a different grant? We got another million dollars? Is this one million dollars that we're talking about? That I know we got from Deco in, uh, uh, February twenty twenty-four. So when did we get this water main break, uh, grant, in other words? And that's the end of my questions.
David Fields. You know, Mr. Mayor, it's a little ironic for the things that's being said out here. It's saying that the mayor and his candidates kicking people off the ballots. Uh, I don't think either one of these candidates, the mayor nor any one of them, put not one hour on anybody's petition. So when is people gonna start taking accountability for themselves? Basic English, basic reading, that's all it took. You had a handbook to read. If you couldn't read it then, that's your fault. Why are you trying to blame other people for your own stupidity? It's a shame that they're going around here talking about the mayor and these, and his candidate got these people kicked off the ballot. No, they didn't. Them people got theyself kicked off the ballot. They didn't have nothing to do with what was on that paper going into their ballots. And I'm quite sure if any one of those candidates had something on that ballot that wasn't sufficient, when you all looked at it, you would have did the same thing, brought them up for an objection. And it's just ironic. And it's just ironic that you don't even want to stand up and be a human being for yourself or an adult for yourself, trying to blame somebody else for your own incompetency. And not just that, we even had one of our trustees that went to their legislative attorney and got a, and got a petition and had them to help her fill it out. And what she don't even realize is that all the information that she put on there, it wasn't by mistake. They knew exactly what they were doing. And the person, the main person that knew what they was doing is sitting right here in this room right now. Knew exactly what they were doing. They didn't want her on the ballot. And it's a shame that y'all not understanding the game that's being played with your mans around here. That these people has got y'all going through, jumping through hoops, and y'all don't even realize it. Y'all need to wake up and start understanding what's happening to you. You're being controlled, and you don't even realize you're being controlled. Grow up and become an adult and stop trying to make other people responsible for your own incompetency. Basic understanding. It ain't nobody's fault that you're not on the ballot. It's your own fault. You need to stop blaming the mayor and these other candidates for your own fault. Blame the people that you went to, because they didn't want you on there. That's the reason why you got the information on there that you had on there. They didn't want you on there. And you need to start looking at yourself and then look at them and see why they didn't want you on there. Stop blaming other people for your own mess. Didn't nobody have nothing to do with nobody's background. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ready? Jeffrey Burns, resident, twenty-six years, school board member, District 168. Uh, I'm gonna make a comment about the young man who just stood up here and talked about somebody's blaming somebody while we kicked off the ballot. First of all, we ain't blaming anybody for anything. So I don't know what he's talking about or what that rumor is about. Furthermore, I will be a right-hand candidate for trustee. So again, I don't know what he's talking about blaming anyone, because me or trustee Burns is not blaming anyone for our mistake, which you did challenge. And we was removed, but we're still running and we're still gonna be right-hand. So I am running for trustee for South Village, and I will continue to challenge the mayor, why do we have a felon sitting up on the board that you are clearly aware of? Uh, we want to know what you're gonna do about that. That is a question that you have not answered. Also want to know when are the audits are gonna get done? That we are four years behind, going on five years. We still haven't got an answer for that. I do want to know when, um, or why are you still trying to pay, uh, Sonia Douglas, who does not work for this village, has not worked for this village for over a year? Uh, and that'll be the end of my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question this time. Uh, well, maybe two. The main question I'm concerned about is when you all do get together to go to the state or the county for money, do you all ask for enough? Do you put all of the, the villages' business on the, on the budget plan? Because the plan is asking for more than what you need. You might get what you want.
David Smith, resident. Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
All right, just a couple of quick comments. Number one, it seems like what I stated a few months back is coming to be true. Four trustees up here put the village in harm's way by firing AIC too soon. And that's just a fact. All facets of the village technology are now seeming to fail because AIC was not allowed to finish the job. Police commander just stood right here. I know trustee Burns couldn't quite comprehend it, but he stated they were not allowed to finish. Run the recording back, because I'll have the video on YouTube by tomorrow. He stated they were not allowed to finish. You guys voted in the upgrades, trustee Williams said earlier. She knows the computers and the infrastructure. It's been outdated for the longest. This is why what Linda Washington said is inaccurate. One person cannot maintain a whole village. And that one person, please don't interrupt me when I'm talking, ma'am, because I didn't interrupt you. At the end of the day, that one person left this village far behind where we needed to be. They needed to have the foresight to upgrade and to plan for the future. That's just that. All you all want to do is sit up and point fingers. The budget, the budget. Why is it that when we're asking about emergency things, police is failing? Two weeks ago, it was the firemen need air packs. That's essential emergency equipment. You want to question the budget? Nobody questioned the budget when you were spending six figures on John Howard and who knows how much on Anthony Finch, because he doesn't even have a contract on file. Nobody questioned the budget then. Nobody questioned the budget when you decided trustee Williams said it out of her mouth. We can have two internal auditors. Now you don't want two IT companies. Again, comprehension, the police commander said he wanted someone to solely focus on his department. So when things are going on in the village, they could still be the priority. This is very important for people that allegedly are supposed to be chairs of Public Health and Safety. We need police. We need their IT services. We need them to be up and running. You guys gotta do better. You gotta do better. And finally, all of this campaigning that's going on up here and in the hallway, let me just remind all of you all again about prohibited political activity because everybody's watching. And please, don't have any more illegal meetings. The one last week, the one in December, now you're averaging one a month. Can we get some retraining on the Openset Meetings Act so that you guys can stay in compliance? This is getting ridiculous. That's it.
Trustee Burns. Trustee Burns, resident, twenty-six years right here in South Village. Okay, I want to address Mr. David Smith. As a resident, I know that this is public information. Mr. David Smith has a criminal record, very bad criminal record, and he's running for clerk of his village. Yet he doesn't want to do anything about the budgets. He doesn't want to do anything about the audits, and he has a problem with the trustees asking questions about contracts that's coming in here without our approval. Employees that's coming in here without our approval. Work being done without our approval. And just for Mr. Smith's information, AIC stood up in this village hall at that table and told every one of us that the work was completed and that the work was done. All of the computers were installed, all of the optics had been run. Don't sit here and tell me, as a resident for twenty-six years in this village, what we don't know. I'm telling you what these people are telling us, and AIC said that it was complete. They said it was done. So you take that to the bank, put that in your pipe and smoke it, Mr. Smith. With your criminal background, we don't want you. And you're not gonna be the clerk of this village if any of us that have common sense have to deal with voting you in. You're not qualified. You don't have the education. I'm a resident and I can speak as such because it's public knowledge. So you want to talk about everybody else's records? What about your record, Mr. David Smith? What about your criminal background, sir? We're tired of you as residents getting up here acting like you're a lawyer because you have access to Derek Burgess's lawyers. That our taxpaying dollars are paying for. And you, and you, and you, ma'am, one minute. And as far as David Fields go, it doesn't matter who I got my, my petition from. I am a woman to stand up and, 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 and make sure that I understand my mistakes. I didn't make a mistake. My petitions were filled out properly. I don't care who don't let me on the ballot. I'm still running for the other village of South Village. I am a right-hand candidate, and you need to know that. So get ready, because none of you all who are running, and you don't have concern about what's going on in this village, something is wrong with you all, and you all are out. You're out. And trustee Carter, you know you are a felon. You know you are a felon, and you can do the decent thing to just step down on your own. You can do the decent thing to step down on your own. Again, I'm gonna say names because it's public. There's nothing to hide. There's nothing to be ashamed of. Step down, sir. Do it on your own. Have decency to step down as a felon, because you know you're not supposed to be there. Just on your own. Step down 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 on your own, because you know you don't belong there. Step down on your own. This is public information. Step down. Be decent and step down. Thank you. I'm a resident and I'm speaking.
No, you're not going. I'm asking for a meeting to be adjourned.
Don't take away my right to speak. Don't take away my right to speak. You can leave if you want to. You can leave if you want.
I will.
Okay. For residents to come here and sit up here and lie, just flat out lie, just flat out lie. We're not gonna sit here and take it. Six figures for the ING? When was that stated? When did we ever say six, I don't need a microphone. When did we ever say six figures for the ING? Yeah, right. Do you, you do the math. When did we ever say that two internal auditors was okay? We don't want internal auditors, and we never, we're fine.
You're not having me now. All you're doing is, for example, that's not what it is that you do. All you're doing is inside, and you can take it inside, and you can do it how I'm asking you to do it. You inside, that's all you do. That's all you do.
They call my name. If you call my name, I'm gonna call your name back. If you call me my name, I'm gonna call your name. If you call me my name, I'm gonna call your name. If you don't want your name called, then don't call mine. Because I'm a resident, and I will say my fact. I am a resident, and I don't want to speak my part. You're not gonna go back before. I'm a resident. And if you don't want it, you leave it now. You leave it now. Go to my place. Go to my place. You don't get out of there, because you don't step out of the door. Get out of the village. Get out of the village, man.
The reason why we want to take people off the ballot, she needs to start.
You just scared me. You scared me.
You scared me to what?
You angry at us because you're a felon? We're doing right thing. You don't belong up there. You don't belong up there, you know, and the police know, and the mayor knows. You don't belong up there. And it's time for you to go. And any trustee that's gonna be a trustee, I understand there are no families up there. We don't need criminals. We do not need criminals in our government. That's what's wrong right now. Too many criminals in the government. Too many criminals in South Village Government. Too many criminals. Too many criminals in this government. We are broke. We are broke. The only money that we can pay our employees when it's through the water pump. We are broke. What about that, David? It's village.
Leave that hole on.